To Winter Heights City Council, come to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Prado.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Folks, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you approve the agenda?
So.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Prado.
Yes.
And Mike Jones.
Yes.
Got the media stuff out of there. Chad, would you like to take over and make your presentations?
Please.
Sure.
Spencer?
So we've got some awards that I've been waiting to give out until we were back into a in-person council meeting so that we could do them publicly. The first one we need for AMT firefighter Spencer Johnson. On Friday, December 11th, 2020, Winter Heights Fire Department paramedic firefighter Jones, paramedic firefighter Beach, AMT firefighter Johnson, were dispatched to a difficulty breathing call at Walmart in Winter Heights. When crews arrived, they found a male who had attempted to take his own life behind the building. The male has severe lacerations and a blood pressure of only sixty-four over forty-two. Patient was stabilized and quickly transported to the hospital in critical condition. The patient was ultimately released from the hospital undoubtedly due to the professional care he received in Park Martineau. On May 4th, paramedic firefighter Jones and paramedic firefighter Beach were presented with their life-saving awards in relation to this call in front of their peers, members of the Clyde Fire Department, Mayor Burgess, and council member Skerries. AMT firefighter Johnson's award was delayed until we can present it to the public council meeting once the meetings resume. Please help me in congratulating AMT firefighter Johnson as the chief. Good job.
Thank you.
Chris, Lindsay, Garrett, Brian, Mark.
Everybody.
Another incident that deserves recognition. On May 4th of 2021 at approximately 11:27 PM, the Winter Heights Police and Fire Department personnel responded to the report of unconscious patient on 64th Street. When patrol officers arrived, Mark Davison, Chris Klingon, and Lindsay Miller found the patient in cardiac arrest. Davison, Klingon, and Miller started CPR and deployed an AED in an attempt to revive the patient. Winter Heights Fire Department paramedic firefighter Foreman, paramedic firefighter Jones, and off-duty paramedic firefighter Demarmuth arrived on scene and took over life-saving measures. The patient was shocked with the AED multiple times before being loaded into the ambulance. The patient regained a pulse and spontaneous breathing while en route to the hospital. As a result of the actions taken by our first responders, the patient was ultimately discharged from the hospital. One of the best accomplishments for a first responder, vetted first responder can encounter in their career is saving another human life. I take great pride in awarding life-saving awards to the team and care for the patient with such dedicated and professionalism, dedication and professionalism. The patient, Marlon, and his family are here, joined us this evening, and I'll let him step up and say anything he wants to say in lieu of the awards.
Hi, I'm Marlon. I remember a lot of y'all. I came a couple of times to try to meet y'all in person. I really didn't want to wait until the ceremony to tell y'all like how much I appreciate y'all. You know, I feel like, I don't know, we all became a lot of boundaries, a lot of stereotypes, racism, COVID, just all the things that's going on in the world, you know, y'all put to the side and did what y'all needed to do or allowed the spirit to come into y'all to do what you needed to do to save my life, you know. I'm appreciative of it. My family's appreciative of it. They were all there and witnessed it, you know. Words can't explain how much we appreciate y'all and just thank y'all, you know, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
I'm trying to get myself together.
We're grabbing some tissues for this.
I didn't think I'd be this emotional. That night, I don't know, I think you two were the first ones. I don't think you guys know how relieved and happy I was to see I've got this count. I appreciate the help of all of you guys. It was very trying in the conditions considering we holding sofas on our backs. And working in such a small area for you guys to perform the miracle that you did. I appreciate you and I thank you deeply from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much. I didn't want to say that. I wish I could give you all hugs, so I'll just have virtual hugs for all of my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the rest of the story is you were moving in and there was a large couch involved. Mark. Officer Davison, this is his second life-saving award, at least in my time here, so congratulations.
I got it.
Chris? Well done, thank you. Lindsay? Very nice. Brand-new officer getting an award like that. Good job, thank you. Garrett? Well done. I don't want you to drop it. Good job. This is Brian's second award as well, as many months he was on the call of all awards as well, so.
Can I consider last name?
You bet. Garrett Dunbar? Good job.
Do you want to carry? You almost put it in there.
I guarantee you, I'll take her up for you.
Thank you.
Life-saving awards, we've talked about before, are far and few between, and so it's a very impressive feat when the team is able to do that, as many as we've given out, at least just in my tenure. Everybody should be proud of our group, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Thank you.
Mark.
Mark.
Chris.
Can I get this?
Oh, yeah.
Can we get a photo with the family?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you.
You guys can get the whole family in there.
Yeah, you can get little guys in there and everything.
Hop in.
Don't be shy, you gotta just jump up there.
He probably won't move, yeah.
All right, big smiles on three, one, two, three.
Thank you, guys.
You bet.
You just have no idea how hard it is when you die, you know, I still doubt. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
No problem.
No, we were trying. Don't have to. I knew if we would have let go of that sofa, we'd all have.
It's been a rough day.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, guys, so much for acknowledging them, because they did do some work under some adverse conditions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, fellas.
Thank you, y'all, God bless.
All right, take care, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is public forum, time set aside for comments from the public on city business other than what's listed on the agenda. Anybody here want to speak? No? Next item is consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration, motion to approve.
Could you pull item B on the consent agenda just for a question?
Do you need to pull it or does anyone ask a question?
I just got a motion there and we have discussion. Go ahead, ask your question. You get a second.
Just tell me what this is, folks. It's, I can't pronounce it probably correctly. Butumus materials for 2767 on the claims.
Page six.
Page six.
Uh, page six.
Can you tell me what the name again was?
B U T U M.
Oh, butumus.
Okay.
Um, it's C S S one, which is cold patch, hot patch. It's, it's, it's a something they use to patch the streets.
Oh, it probably works that.
Yeah, it's how it works.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know the actual name.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Prado.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of audio visual upgrades to city council chambers to provide for virtual meetings in the amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Dana?
Thank you, Ms. Command. This item came from the council's decision that they wanted to continue Zoom meetings and conjunction with our in-person meetings. That, I think that's a great idea, and we also plan to use this technology when we're using, we're having group meetings in this room for a few more minutes going forward. We think that that's just a new normal virtual meeting that will be part of how we do business. So we talked to a number of other communities, and Waukees seemed to be the one that was starting from scratch like we were when it comes to upgrading for virtual meetings. We gleaned some information from them, and they also use ABI. They're our audiovisual consultant that works on our community center audio/video work, and they manage the system that we have here in the council chambers. So to ensure that we can connect our audio system here with the online presence, we also asked them to provide for a replacement or addition of the flat screen that you see up on the wall here. We are going to move this one to the back of the room so that the council can see on that video screen the people that are participating in the virtual meeting here, and then replace this screen here so that people in person can also see what's happening with the people in the virtual meeting, and then we can continue to use this for displaying documents and maps like we're coming to do using this system. It also calls for the installation of a rotating pan and tilt camera in the ceiling, a controller for that camera, as well as a bridge to connect that camera to the overall video system within the chamber so that we can continue to provide video or record video of the meeting going forward. The reason this is a little different, councilperson Skerries has asked this question for just having a camera that we have here today, is that the camera system that we have in place right now doesn't use the audio system that we have in place, so we have to rely on the microphone and the audio system here. There are also some limitations where it does not actually, unless Whitney picks up the camera and comes to the front, so we can't get on video anybody appearing at the podium, or it's also difficult to see the faces of the council members if they're making comments during the meeting. And then we also needed to upgrade the camera for our video marketing efforts. Whitney's done a lot of video presentations, for example, on the road projects. The camera is a basic remedial camera that we have now, and this will offer her other additional features, and then we also can take this to other meeting facilities like the community center or city hall if we want to record a meeting that's in progress. So we understand that's an expensive proposition, but we just think that this is the normal way of doing business going forward. We originally asked ABI to provide a quote to fully outfit this, this room, and also provide a quote to outfit the community center so we can have also the virtual meeting capabilities out there, but in total, I think the quote was in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars, so we went back and told them to pare things down to the basics, and that's what we're talking about here. In the future, we expect to have other phases of audiovisual upgrades, but those will be included and presented to the council as budget items and so forth.
Motion do approve? Any further discussion or questions?
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, did we only receive the, the one bid? Did, that's all, do we, can we just get the one bid, or don't we have to receive more unless it's like a state or, you know, the state or federal bid contract?
No, this is a professional services contract that we already have established with ABI. That's why it allows us to use our consultants already on contract, basically.
So we didn't even see if anybody else could come in and bid this differently?
Correct. We took our current consultant and asked them to provide a quote, yes.
So we didn't ask anybody else?
Correct, that's correct, which is not uncommon.
But I guess for me, I would like to at least look at other options, because twenty-six thousand dollars right now is kind of a lot of money, and if we're doing it in stages, I still would like to see more than just one bid here. I think that that's just kind of how I like to, to do things.
We're agreeable to that, that's fine. If the council votes not to approve this expenditure tonight, we'll go out and get as many quotes from as many audiovisual, video companies that we can find around that area.
And then it talks about, in the email that you sent back, it says that, that it's like a hand tilt camera, or something like that, so that we can see movements and everything. Are we gonna have staff people man that, or is that, so somebody will be, a staff member will be at the city council meetings to man this?
And that's why it was important to have the handheld controller versus somebody sitting back in the audio video room back there where they can't actually see the meeting going on.
So they would be stuck back in there?
No, no, no.
But they would be, but if, if we didn't have the controller, they would be stuck there?
Yes, because we'd have to also add a monitor so that they can watch and see what the camera's looking at, but we're gonna have them out here in the meeting. So if push comes to shove, let's say we're all on staff at a meeting, then we could have Travis do both the minutes and run the Zoom meeting. We prefer not to do that because I think that's a little bit too much just for one person, so we're gonna have another staff person managing, managing the Zoom meeting.
Any further discussion?
Who else has something like this?
Waukees.
That's it?
That's the one we went to. Many of the other communities had already established a virtual, virtual meeting system when the pandemic began.
Well, I know, but I mean, who has a hybrid system?
Nearly everybody in the region.
Well, I guess.
Yes.
So when I, I did a quick look and, and went through and looked at different various cities, kind of like what you're asking, Mike. Clyde, it looked like they had one fixed camera, looking at the video, the YouTube videos, looked like they had one fixed camera with the TV behind the council for the people in the room to kind of look at. Of course, I don't know what was facing this way because we were facing this way. Then Waukees had the movable camera that's operated by staff members. Grimes has, it looked like, had one fixed camera. Norwalk was using Zoom with a movable camera. Indianola had a movable camera. Ankeny was using Zoom, but I can't locate any video information, I'm just pulling that off of their minutes. Then kind of Altoona uses Zoom, I couldn't locate the video information on that. Then going out, like Iowa City has the movable cameras, and Johnston also has a movable camera.
Who's names?
So I went through because I like to know, kind of like what you're talking about, Mike, I like to know who has what in the city, and that's kind of what my expectation was, that we would kind of receive the information that this is what is kind of going on in other cities. So I went through on Sunday and kind of looked at various YouTube videos and meeting minutes.
Thanks for doing it. You know, I look, look at this expenditure recommendation, and I, I think there's nothing wrong with the equipment that you're trying to purchase. However, we're a mini-city of five thousand people, and not that we don't deserve the best, but I think we're overstretching, we're overstretching the need. There is a need to be able to film stuff, and I think we can do that, but that price would not be one that I would support.
I think the price is perfectly fine, having just built a building. I think the technology we want to have to be able to actually produce for our citizens if whoever else wants to watch something all again, and they're acting, I think that's, I think it's perfectly fine. And we'll vote for us to do this, but I also know that if the publics want to give bids, I'm perfectly inclined to look for that, too, but I don't have any problem with this.
Teresa, Mike?
So I would just echo probably Joseph's comments because I've also done some technology upgrades to make that, so I understand that the associated costs are real. In the same token, I would support additional bids, so.
And of course, whatever we purchase will be obsolete probably in two years.
Well, I think you can, I don't necessarily agree with that, I think you can.
I do, because technology changes at fast.
With, well, it does change, but I think that you can, you can put in parts to just do the increases as you need. I think the biggest thing is, is that we've had requests from residents so that they can continue to participate in our meetings. We had great participation when we were on Zoom, and I'd like for those folks to be able to participate, so that means that we are behind, and we are probably one of the only ones in the metro that aren't there yet, and we need to get there, and so we have to figure out how to get that done. I'm open to getting some bids, and I think we probably do need to spend some resources to get us into the 21st century.
Teresa, let me ask you, you said we have great particip, we had great participation on Zoom. What does that mean?
Well, I, if people can participate from their own.
No, you said we have great participation.
Oh, I said we did have good, we did have great participation. I thought the fact that we had people participating.
I don't know, I don't know how many we had participating.
It doesn't matter.
Well, it kind of does.
No, we had people participating, that was my point.
I'm not saying we didn't have a few people participating.
Okay, that's my, that's an opinion.
That is how I would define great.
Great, so, yes, some.
I think councilmember Harms has a formal speaking.
Yes. Yes, you did.
Mine, Dan.
Mike?
I, I guess by understanding, Dennis, what you had just relayed was that this was the desire of the council to do this, and so like the majority of the council feel it was just too expensive for once more bid, then I don't think it'll proceed.
Who's made the motion, Travis?
I have a motion by Teresa and a second by Joseph.
Want to retract your motions, folks?
Nope. That's okay.
Yeah, just go on it. Things can fail.
Right, that's okay.
Like you could, like you could.
That's what we're here to do, we're here to model, so.
All right, let's make it fail, man. We got a motion to second, we've had discussion, roll call.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Susan Skerries.
No.
Mike LaPrado.
No.
And Mike Jones.
No. Motion did not carry.
Okay, so that I'm clear this evening moving forward, and with a little preface that maybe I should have started with, but we want to ensure that the transition to a Zoom virtual meeting is flawless, and that we do not have technical difficulties when we're trying to include our, the community in conversations. So with that basis, I didn't want to try to give you the bare bones, I wanted to give you something that I knew was gonna work and be reliable. With that said, we can go back and get more bids and come back with those bids so that you can see cost comparisons. I completely agree with you, Susan, and so we'll try to get that for the next meeting, and if not, definitely by the meeting after that. It's gonna be, we're at the mercy of these consultants putting this together. So we'll put that together, but before I leave, I want to know, is everybody comfortable with the additional screen, the one pan and tilt camera, and the bridge to connect all of this together? Very similar to what we're looking for, we're just looking at comparing costs of that equipment. Because if I do all that work and I come back and really what you want is, I don't know, Johnston's movable camera that's on a cart that moves around, and we have a staff member that runs like a movie set, I can do that, too, I'd like just to know that now before.
Well, that's an option, I guess.
Okay, so same situ, same system that I have given you tonight with cost comparisons, if they're all out of your league in terms of price, then we can maybe readjust what we're gonna be bidding out, is that fair?
Now, is this something that if we don't do the TV there, that we can still put the, the screens to see people up here, if that's kind of one of those, if we can take away that TV screen for us as far as council goes to kind of reduce that number, the hurtful number on the bid, are we still able to kind of project the Zoom, the participants up on both sides of these?
No, 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 it would show up on that screen, so that means that you would have to reel, reel around and watch that screen during the meeting to see somebody, that's why we want to move it to there, so that you, the entire council has the same vision of the people that are appearing before you, your citizens, you're seeing them face-to-face on the meeting, not just hearing them. But we also want that so that the people in the audience can see, and they don't have to turn around and watch the screen, this is used to participate for all.
If, if, I think if someone wants twenty-five thousand dollars from us, they can come and explain how it works.
Sure, of course.
I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable.
No, absolutely not. I just kind of took offense to that, I don't know how to describe technology.
No, 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 I, I mean the people who would be paying. Not you, right?
No, of course not.
You wouldn't dare.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is consider approval of starting salary for fire EMS captain to seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars. Motion? Any discussion?
I think Chad would just care to give you a quick presentation.
So as you recall, I've been working on this project for a while. We finally got the job description, the salary range set, which then led to opening a position. The position is the Council Action Forum States was open over thirty days, it was posted on about anything and everything I could find that posted on. And as like anything, not to diminish the quality of the candidate that's selected, but hiring is, is a challenge right now for, I think, everybody, be all of that. So we were fortunate that we did have some good candidates apply, we did not have a huge pool of people. The process was such that the candidates were, were invited in for interviews. There was one panel that was Metro Fire Chiefs, the chief from Johnston Grimes Fire Department, the chief from Des Moines, the chief from Clyde. Des Moines, Johnston Grimes, Clyde.
Paul County, MA.
Yeah, AJ from Emergency Management, there is another chief, I failed. Drawn a blank line. But they, they came in earlier, chief hold, sorry. So the, those who applied were invited to an interview in front of those, those people, and then we also had a staff panel that included paramedic firefighter Nicola, paramedic firefighter Jones, one paid-on call member, Bobby Klingon, who works for Public Works as well, and a part-time member, Jim Neese, who's also a lieutenant with Norwalk, and that way we had full-time, part-time, paid-on call all represented. And the candidates interviewed between the two separate panels, they were separated, fire chiefs and the staff panel. The fire chiefs and I debriefed after the interviews, and then we brought the staff panel in to debrief in front of the fire chiefs, but they did not get feedback from the fire chiefs, if that kind of makes sense if you follow what I'm saying. But the results of those interviews were consistent among all of those that participated in the panels, in that their feeling was that Blake Boyle, who was currently a member of the Clyde Fire Department, would be the, the best candidate for the position. Blake's here tonight, so I'll be happy to introduce him. One of the things when we. One of the things we got into discussing onboarding Blake was the fact that he currently makes between $69,000 and $70,000 a year at Clive. So of course I can't bring him in at the low end of our wage scale because that'd be a $7,000 a year pay cut for him. So we negotiated a number and made a conditional offer, continued upon council approval based on that number. One concern that I know is out there is that Blake lives quite a distance from the city. He is within city policy. City policy gives 30 miles. And I know that there's been some discussion throughout the community from a couple of people about, is that a reasonable distance? Can he respond? Any incident that him or I either one need to respond to, a 15 to 20 minute response is just going to be the beginning of that incident. It's going to be a long-term thing. The other thing is we have 20 mutual aid agreements and we get auto aid from Clive, West Des Moines, Urbain Dale. Those auto aid assignments typically include a chief officer as well. And you know, this position really is more a function of continuity and day-to-day supervision of the fire team than it is the response aspect. So if we have a significant incident, chances are I'm going to be there as well. And like I said, Blake, you know, being there 15, 20 minutes after the incident again is just simply going to disstart that incident. It is not a big deal, so it's more for the day-to-day operation supervision. I'm taking a little bit of it off my plate and doing payroll scheduling, training, everything that there is to do with first-line supervision back there in addition to the administrative duties. Any questions?
Yeah, Chad, the, the distance thing, is that some sort of thing that we have to do, deal with, or is that sort of your call?
It's in city personnel policy, so that in order to change that, I'll take action with council.
Chad, I just would add that I know that you guys do a dear due diligence on this. This is a position we've been trying to fill for a long time. I also know that the market's not, not that our candidates are not phenomenal, but you know, the market's not great right now. I'm trying to also hire and it's a very difficult thing to find good qualified candidates. And as a result, market rate is changing significantly for that. And so, you know, I already moved to approve this, but obviously the market rate, you know, for this position for today, for this person is that. So I hope and as public safety chairperson, I ask you all to consider voting and supporting us so we can fill this position that's been open for a couple of years and move forward.
Everyone, I'm very happy that it is finally being filled. This has been ongoing for what, three years now probably? And probably even prior to that as well. So I am very happy for this and I welcome you into the fire department here.
Yeah, I, I agree. Really, Chad, when you recommend somebody, I'm totally confident in it. So that's number one.
Trust me, nobody will be more happy than I will.
Travis, we have a motion?
Yep.
Second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I introduce Captain Boyle. And we're going to throw him right into the fire. He's going to come onboard the same way we switched to Westcom. So no, no rest for the weird.
That's good.
I'll just hang out here for the next couple of days, I might.
Please don't throw him into the fire.
Great pod, wasn't it? We know a bit for that one. Love the board.
Have you signed your forms yet? You can still go back. Please don't.
Next item is consider approval of purchase of expiration equipment for Windsor Heights Fire Department in the amount not to exceed $35,734 plus shipping cost from Sandry Fire. Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
So also just so you have the knowledge, the reason this council action form is written not to exceed is because there's some negotiating going on. And I think we're going to be able to save probably another $1,000 to $1,500 on this purchase. So I'll have that for sure, I know the very near future. It's not set yet, so that's why I wanted to make sure we had it covered, but I'm confident we'll be there, so.
Get after it. You got to make up some money in your budget.
I do, somewhere.
Rachel, tell them.
Rachel always says we're okay.
Next item is consider approval of purchase of body worn cameras for Windsor Heights Police Department in the amount of $17,126.40. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion of this?
So on this one, one note, I kind of overlooked this, which is why it's, it's mentioned in the council action form. But Captain Meyer and I discussed the replacement of these under the Equipment Replacement Plan, ERP. They're in the budget, they're approved with the budget. And just quite honestly, with everything going out, everything else going on, him and I discussed the purchase and we moved forward with it. We have not paid the bill yet, but we've acquired the items. And then once we got the items in here, it dawned on me that we've not been accounted. So I apologize for that oversight. That's not how I typically work, as you all know. And this is just to correct that error and move forward, so.
Roll call.
Okay. It's already approved, is it?
Hmm?
It's already, it wasn't?
Nope.
Okay, sorry, Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
We really didn't want council approval on that.
Chad, real quick, how, how often do we repre-, replace those? I'm just, I couldn't remember because I felt like I've done it on cameras in the past.
Yeah, so the, the service life is three years on.
Okay.
Keep in mind that they're a small electronic device that's worn on officers. So they're exposed to elements, they're exposed to, you know, beating, right? These are four years and the reason that they were extended out is because when we went to replace them a couple of years ago, a year ago, arbitrator Panasonic was coming out with a new model of them. And what we did not want to do is be the first ones to get the new model and then have problems. So we elected to make sure that we had a quarter or half of a year under their belt to make sure they're going to work right before we move forward with it. So they should be replaced every three years.
All right, good, thank you.
So Westcom has nothing to do with these?
No, these are the body cameras that the officers wear on the person and then they connect into the patrol cars. So just a quick update while I'm here on Westcom. We're, I've got the counter on my computer, 14 days, probably around eight hours and some minutes and some seconds before we make that switch. But we have weekly transition meetings every Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning. And those meetings are getting shorter and shorter as things are locking up and we're doing well. So the question this morning is what stops this, if anything, as far as process? So you know, if we don't have something like that, we push the timeline back. And the consensus among everybody was we don't, we just keep moving forward. So I think we've got a rating in mind, we're doing good. Kudos to Captain Meyer on the just sheer silly amount of work he's doing on that. So I hate throwing that in, but I'm hoping for a smooth transition and it's looking good, so.
Does this switch over at midnight then, on like starting August 1st, September 22nd at midnight?
10 a.m.
10 a.m.
Yep, that way everybody's in the office, we're all onboard. We actually, so the 22nd is a Wednesday. The 20th, that Monday, we'll do a soft launch and start testing things to make sure they're where we think they should be. And then that can run into Tuesday if needed. Our team has gone over and sat for two hours at a time with Westcom, which has been a great experience for them because a lot more people didn't have an abandoned dispatch and obviously that sign of what's going on. And then their team has come over with us and I've heard nothing but great comments about their team coming over and enjoying their time here. Excuse me. There's something else I was going to say about that, I can't remember what it was now. But our, our admin teams are working seamlessly together and, and you know, the comments we've heard is it's, it's been the easiest transition of the three, or walk, walking us thus far. So I'm confident that we'll, we'll get through it. We'll have a hiccup here and there, I'm sure, but we'll get through it and be good. So, but 10 a.m. on, on Wednesday.
Thanks, Chad. Keep it updated, Chad.
Yep.
Thanks for all your work, Derek. I feel like we've talked about this for a long time.
We have. We have. Derek's trying to pull what little hair he has left out, so. Every morning he walks in, he's like, please no more.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All the work. Next item is consideration of University Avenue change order number 18. This is a huge one.
Why's that? Mr. Mayor, this began with the budget that was developed for the University Avenue project was a worst-case scenario in terms of the full depth patching requirements for the section between 63rd and 69th. And now that we're into it and Justin's been looking at that section more recent, recently, it does not, it's not going to require full depth patching for the whole section. So the real problem that Justin has identified are the joints failing between the panels of the concrete and not the concrete themselves. So he's recommending that we do partial depth patching in most of those sections. This will reduce the full depth patching budget by $100,000 and adding the partial depth patching costs, it's a net reduction of $41,433. And just so you know, this also does leave some money in the budget for full depth patching. If we discover we still need to go forward and do that in certain spots. If we do not, then we'll be doing the entire project closeout and saving additional funds if it all pans out the way Justin thinks. Anything to add to that, Justin, or are there any questions from council?
I'll ask the questions first. Yeah, anyway. It's simple, just give you what it looks like. It's, we did this on 70th Street. Was it two years ago now or something? So that's kind of the type of work it is. Ultimately, it's going to get covered up by an overlay, so. But typical with concrete, it's the joints that fail. The rest of the pavement is good shape, so we figured why rip out? Because we have to go minimum of four to six feet, so why rip out the pavement? So we'll just replace the joints and it's a lot faster too. We do have a big patch that's going on 64th Street. That's, we couldn't save that one as much as you probably know already, so that's probably, hopefully that's the last new patch.
But before anybody gets the idea that by doing this, we're speeding up the construction.
Yeah, right, no.
I've been told that's not going to happen.
No, it speeds up that process, not some other thing, sorry. Thanks for clarifying.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So what are we looking at as far as the timeline toward university? Not because this is adding things up, but just how are we, are we on track? Are we going to finish here before December?
Oh yeah, the working days, I believe, are probably upper 30s right now. That's just includes Monday through Friday, so we're looking at, at October. I think the biggest thing is just the landscaping items, might not think of them as soon enough. So that's probably the biggest, otherwise the rest of it, Wednesday night, if all possible. Stay away from the 73rd, the 70th area, they're supposed to re-strike that as his final striking. So they're going to start that at 6 o'clock and probably go in all night long, so. When I say all night long, it's probably all night long, so it's a lot of pavement markings and stuff. So if people stay away from that area, it's better, so.
So when everybody wakes up the next day, it'll be like being in Chamberlain?
Yeah, it'd be all totally different, so.
Justin, now, is there an upgrade in the lighting, the street lighting?
Um, the street lighting, most of it is up except for the north side, which should go up. I believe the base was reported last week, last Wednesday, and that means like seven, at least seven days a year or so. Eventually, all that stuff will get put up on the north side. I believe all the south side's been much up. And I'm not sure if it's running or not, but I think so.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is reports, Teresa.
We have, the next weekend, we have public safety meetings scheduled for next Thursday, which I'm going to the league conference, so Chad and I are going to talk about whether we need to reschedule that. But I always, that's what's up and coming. I can't do anything else.
Mike?
We got an email, I think that was an email to all of us to raise a good point or question, being that the signage on the 63rd and Hickman sign for Windsor Heights does not match the signage for the 63rd and University. The logo is different. There's a tree on one, the other one just has WH. So I'm hoping that can be brought into conformity because it would kind of be silly if it didn't. Obviously gotten a lot of feedback both on social media personally and via email, as all of us have with regards to ALDI. If indeed, I think it is the desire of city, the city staff to make the recommendation that we move forward with this thing, I think that city staff needs to be aggressive in, I would say, countering or correcting any sort of misinformation that is presented by a most important regional news network. And then on that same note, I know there's some things that I'm hoping will be cleaned up with regards to city code. Be it that I think that we put something about, you know, chimneys being okay in city limits, but then we have a requirement of our city code that says that if you sell chimneys, you have to post that you can't use them in city limits. So I hope that things like that will get cleared up over time. Let's not actually report just the long list of complaints, thank you. Before, before we jump, Chad, right now, the current way that we're operating is that chimney is okay because it has a smoke stack and conforms to the code.
So I actually just sent out an email today to the PD and fire. The city code simply states that the products of combustion have to go through a chimney or a stack. So there was a comment on Facebook about one, it was a screen that had a chimney. By code, as long as the smoke and product of combustion is going through that chimney and not out the side of the screens, by code, it's legal. That, it, kind of a head of the game here, but one of the things that I'm going to discuss with the Public Safety Committee in our next meeting is some clarification, update and definitions, because we don't define a chimney as a stack. So really, it could be anything. And so that, that's all stuff that's working process. But yes, as long as it has a chimney or a stack and the products of combustion go through that chimney or stack, it's legal at this point.
Chad, are we similar to the surrounding cities on that currently?
No.
Okay.
The surrounding cities don't allow it, you know. And actually, Polk County Air Quality, they'll actually come in and find somebody, even though they're in compliance with our city code. So there, there's some work to be done on that and I've, I've got a packet of recommendations on my desk to, to work through with the Public Safety Committee and draft some recommendations that'll be coming.
Mike, anything further?
No, thank you, good.
I'm looking forward to the all these developments. Hopefully get that building.
We'll have an Economic Development Committee meeting at the end of September. Lots of things to talk about and Susan and I have a list of more things to talk about. We had a dark commission meeting today. You'll be happy to know that there was about 140,000 riders for the state fair, but that was down about 44% from previous years. Like other entities, there's a shortage of employees, so we have an operator shortage, both for paratransit and for part-time fixed route drivers. So that's a big concern for us. And then we're going to start in November, a micro transit pilot in Acapulco to try to enhance what they're doing for on-call there. Obviously, we'll see how that affects the rest of the metro if we can do something like that. Yeah, that's it.
Chad?
Metro Waste did not meet last month, so no updates there. They are meeting on the 15th, I believe, so I think Mr. LaFredo will be joining because I'll be at the league, the league. So I will give you that information as I receive it. And then just kind of to reiterate what Mike Jones said, I just would like us to make sure that we're providing the correct information to residents about ALDI so that there is no confusion, so that we are not, as council members, going through and trying to explain to people, tonight was just a public, or here it was just set to, you know, do a public hearing, to set that date. That wasn't very well-known to people and I kind of would like us, as far as the city, to go.
to go out on social media and kind of explain. I saw that, you know, we talked about the city council meeting tonight, but it, it didn't say anything about, this is not, you know, at this meeting, we are not going to approve ALDI come in or not. This is, you know, and explain what this event was tonight. So I think after a few emails, kind of calmed people down on it, but kind of took away from my, my job today, because I spend a lot of time emailing people back and forth.